Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The clerk will note that council members Gustafson and Workman are attending the conference, the League of Minnesota Conference this evening, and are absent tonight. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person or watch this meeting online on Burnsville, mn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16 or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on our agenda is announcements and proclamations. Our announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Monday, July 3, and that meeting is being canceled. We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 18 at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, July 11 at 5:30 p.m. We have a governance meeting for participatory budgeting, and the expert testimony is Tuesday, June 20 this evening after the council meeting, and that will be around 6:00 p.m. We have a special work session for Department Strategic Plan Number Three, and that's for Tuesday, July 11 at 6:30 p.m. We also have a special work session for our budget, and that's Tuesday, July 18 at 6:30 p.m. All meetings at the council are held here in the council chambers unless I announce a different location for a particular meeting. The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone on Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will move on to additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any additional items to be brought before the council?
Nothing from staff, Mayor.
Thank you. Members of the council, okay, thank you. We will now move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on a consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Anyone in the audience? Mrs. Collins, anyone on Zoom who wishes an item?
No one on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Okay. City Manager Lindberg, any item to be removed by staff?
Yeah, one item tonight, Mayor. Due to attendance, I would like to move 4S off of the consent agenda for continuation.
Okay. I will... Members of the council, 4S is being removed for continuation to a separate meeting. Mr. Garrett, I believe we need to vote on the continuation of that item?
Mayor and council, if you just vote on it as the consent agenda with it pulled by staff, knowing that it's going to, you know, the next meeting, that's perfectly acceptable.
Without a separate motion to continue it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, members of the council, do you want any item to be removed? Councilmember Keeley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to pull 4T and 4U for public announcement only.
Okay.
These are exciting developments. I don't want to just slide under the radar there with the consent agenda.
4T and 4U.
4T and 4U.
Okay, very good. May I ask a motion to adopt the balance, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Mr. Lindberg, 4S is being continued, and that's the resolution to formally adopt the amendment to the Burnsville 2040 Comprehensive Plan to change the text, maps, and graphics for BSLI Inc., and this is the landfill use plan from golf course to open space at 2850 Cliff Road.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. Only purpose tonight is the item, Complan Amendment requires four votes, a supermajority vote of the city council, and we don't have four votes this evening.
Thank you.
So staff would ask that we continue the item to the July 18 meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Keeley, 4T, and these are items that were on the Planning Commission and the public hearing was held there, and it comes to us with a unanimous vote of the Planning Commission to adopt, and this is the application of Difley 13 LLC for a conditional use permit for a new car wash use and preliminary and final plat of a three-lot commercial subdivision of Difley 13 on 3.07 acres of land formerly known as Mr. B.'s Car Wash and River View Shopping Center. This is located southeast of the intersection of Highway 13 East and Difley Road. Councilmember Keeley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the announcement of the location. This particular corner has been a point of discussion for this council and the neighborhoods it's surrounded for many years. This, we hope, is just the first step in a redevelopment for that corner, but I thought it was worthy of announcement at the council level for the neighborhoods that are across 13 that have been hoping for some redevelopment activity at the corner of Difley and Highway 13. So I'm very pleased to see some activity. I know we all are, and look forward to some additional activity after this particular car wash is built. With that, a move to approve.
There's a motion.
There is a second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Councilmember Keeley, the next item is 4U, and this is the application of SBAP-2, Burnsville Market LLC for a concept and development stage planned unit development to redevelop and construct a new grocery supermarket and potential for six separate commercial and retail buildings, preliminary and final plat of the Burn Hill Third Edition and subdivision ordinance variance for the Easeman at 1750 County Road 42 West. This is the Cub site on County Road 42. Councilmember Keeley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it's good. A lot of these applicants and the documentation comes through with, you know, corporate names that most people wouldn't have any idea who they are, and you almost have to go in Google Maps, put in the address to find out exactly where this is and who it is. But this is pretty exciting. We've been given some redevelopment plans two or three times over the last 10 years, possibly, or more, for the redevelopment of the Cub Food on County Road 42. It's an unusually windowless building, for the most part, a lot of brick, not very inviting, and I am really excited that the owner, the new owner of Cub, is going through with this redevelopment, going to build a new Cub and construct opportunities for other retailers to take space adjoining in the parking lot. This is a big plus, I think, for the whole County Road 42 corridor. It's a retail Main Street for us, and obviously, we appreciate the Cub putting in some investment to bring a brand-new store and creating this additional retail. It's going to really change the corner of 5 and 42 in a big, positive way. So with that, a move to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
Yeah, and a second. And I just want to say thank you to the Sterling Group, who are the property owners, and for all the work. So thank you for coming and making sure that this goes through, but you also had a very good hearing at the Planning Commission meeting, and as you can see, everybody's in support of that and will continue to work with the county on that access off of 42. So I know that you're still working with the county engineer and the city manager, and I will continue to work on our end as well. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Yeah. Now you can enjoy the rest of the evening. We now are on the regular agenda, and the first item on the regular agenda is the review and accept the 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Statement and Audit Report from our independent auditor. And presenting this evening is our CFO, Deputy City Manager Jenny Rhodey, and she will recognize and introduce Segal from MMKR.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Tonight, I'm here to introduce you to our... Introduce you. She's been here a few years. Introduce Jackie Higle from the audit firm MMKR. She's the Audit Principal and Auditor in charge of the audit, city's audit of our financial statements for the fiscal year 2022. She'll present the results of that audit, as well as some financial information. After the presentation, she and staff are available for questions, if you have any.
Thank you, and welcome. It's good to see you.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me tonight. I am here to present the audit results for the year ended December 31, 2022. Another year has gone by already. As auditors, my role is to issue an opinion on the city's basic financial statement. Since your city does receive more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, there is a separate single audit of those federal awards. So in the current year, the city's Sifa, which is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, was about $4.8 million in federal funding, and the program that was audited in the current year is the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, or you might know it as the ARPA dollars. But that was the federal program that was audited in 2022. So as part of our audit, we test and review the internal controls and compliance over that financial statement audit with that federal single audit and also with the Minnesota legal compliance. So each year, the Office of the State Auditor releases what's known as that legal compliance manual, that as auditors, we're required to test those specific statutes in that manual. And it does change from year to year. Some of the statutes stay the same, but from year to year, they do change as well, what we do test. As you'll see as we go through here, the audit results were very good. This summarizes the audit results over that financial statement audit. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. If you are looking at your annual comprehensive financial report, you are going to notice one thing this year, that the city was required to implement a new GASB standard. So in the current year, all local governments are required to implement GASB Statement Number 87, which is a lease standard. It's a single model for lease accounting that now, as local governments, you're required to report a lease asset and lease liability on your financials if you are the less E in a transaction. And now you're also required to report a lease receivable and offsetting deferred inflow if you are the less O in any lease transactions. So the significant change you're seeing in your financials is you do have a lease receivable, about $13 million recorded on your financials. The city does have several antenna lease agreements with various cellphone providers that go out several years. So you're recording that lease receivable now on your financials, but then you will still just recognize that revenue each year as you collect it throughout the next several years. As part of our internal controls review over the financial statement audit, we had no findings to report, and with our compliance audit with the financial statements and legal compliance, no findings to report. This next slide then summarizes the results of that federal single audit. So as I mentioned previously, the grant that was audited in the current year is that Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on that schedule of federal awards, and as part of all of our testing with the internal controls and the compliance, we had no findings to report in that area. So overall, as you can see from this slide and the previous slide, very good audit results, all clean on internal controls and compliance, no findings to report, which is great. The next several slides I have here summarizes various financial results of the city for the 2022 year. This slide specifically shows all the governmental funds and the change in that fund balance from 2021 to 22. Overall, that fund balance on increase of about $6.9 million. The top part of that table shows it by the classification of fund balance, the dollars that are non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, with the bottom portion of that table showing it by fund. You're seeing an increase, there's some dollars in that non-spendable category in the current year. That is due to the general fund did advance some funds to non-major funds for some economic development activities, so that is reported as non-spendable. You saw increases in your committed fund balance, mainly in that infrastructure trust and that capital, or that facilities capital project fund. And then your assigned dollars increased with more park dedication funds received in the current year, offsetting that unassigned fund balance of about $3.4 million, which is mainly in the general fund and some with that reclassification to that new non-spendable that you're required to report with that advance. This slide summarizes some financial trends of just the general fund financial position, showing the cash balance, the fund balance, and the expenditures for the past five years. Overall, the general fund cash ended the year with about $30.1 million. The fund balance at year-end of the general fund was about $26.9 million. There's a decrease of about $1.7 million from the prior year. If you are looking at that, that decrease is all due to, as a city, you're required to report the change in the fair value of investments, so that's causing that decline in the current year. But at year-end, that fund balance in the general fund was about 53% of the subsequent year budgeted use of funds. This next graph I have here summarizes general fund revenue excluding that change of fair value of investments, showing budget to actual. Overall, the general fund revenues saw an increase of about $5.2 million from the prior year, was also about $5 million over budget. Both those variances are due to the same two areas. If you're looking at that graph, you're seeing your intergovernmental revenues were over budget. That is just due to how those coronavirus, the coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds were reported. So the city budgeted for a transfer in on those funds, but they get reported as an intergovernmental revenue. So bottom line, net difference of zero, but just how it gets reported in the financials. And then your charges for services were over budget, about $1.3 million. That's mainly due to the general fund recognizing some host fee revenue in the current year and as well as the emergency medical services activity being more than anticipated. You're looking at your general fund expenditures, comparing current year to prior year, you saw an increase of about $3.5 million in the expenditures. Majority of this, about $2 million, is in the public safety function with increased personnel costs about the police and fire departments. Your general government also saw an increase of about $1 million from the prior year. Overall, comparing those general fund expenditures to budget, overall, you're about $575,000 less than budget. Most of that was in that general government function, as well as about Public Works was under budget due mainly in the engineering department. The next several slides I have then will summarize the results of those enterprise funds, so the business-type funds of the city. This first slide here gives a snapshot of that enterprise fund, change in that financial position, current year to prior year. Once again, the top portion shows it by that classification, the bottom by the funds. But overall, the enterprise funds increased about $820,000 from the prior year, and I'll walk through several of these funds. So here's a graph of that water and sewer fund activity for the past five years. Overall, the water and sewer fund had an increase in net position of about $640,000. You saw your operating revenues increase about $860,000. That was mainly due to there was an approved rate increase in the current year, as well as an increase in consumption. And you saw your operating expenses also increased about $800,000, mainly due to personal service costs, as well as the sanitary sewer disposal costs that have continued to increase. But ended the year overall with operating income of about $60,000. And if you're looking at that graph, that purple bar line, graph line, that excludes depreciation. So the green line shows that operating income, but if you exclude the depreciation, you had income of about $3.3 million. Stormwater Fund also had positive operating results, ended the year with operating income of about $34,000. Overall, the operating revenues in this fund increased about $100,000, as well as your expenses went up proportionally with that. This next graph shows summary results of the AIM Center Fund. If you're comparing current year to prior year, you're seeing your revenues go down. That's that yellow bar graph there. If you remember, the city did receive a COVID grant in the prior year, a shuttered venue grant, which was $1 million. So that's that difference when you're looking 21 to 22 in the revenue area. Expenses were up about $350,000, mainly in the contracted labor. The last graph of the enterprise funds I have here is the Ice Arena Fund, showing results there. You saw an increase in your operating revenues in the current year, just under $100,000, mainly just due to the increased rentals in 2022. Likewise, you saw your expenses also go then up proportionally with that, mainly in the personnel service costs. Well, this fund overall, at the end of the year, had an operating loss of about $450,000. If you exclude that depreciation, a loss of about $50,000. And then the last slide I have here summarizes what we call the government-wide financial statements of the city. It's a snapshot of the net position of the city. So it takes all your governmental funds, all your enterprise funds of the city. It rolls all the activity together, and it also includes any capital asset activity of this city, as well as any pensions, OPEV liabilities, debt information, to give a snapshot as of year-end. So overall, looking at that net position, the city saw an increase of about $8.7 million from the prior year. Majority of that is in that governmental activities, the top portion, just with the improved financial position from 2021 to 2022. So with that, I could open it up if there are any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Higle? Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you do and the work that you do with our staff. And just reading through your report, it just appears to me that each time MMKR comes in, there's always an improvement in the way that we interact with you and the work that's being done. And I know the transfer to you, this is your second report before us, am I correct?
So, second or third? Yeah, one of those two.
So, and thank you so much. Members of the council, do you have any questions? If not, a motion to adopt and receive the audit is in order.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the ordinance adopting the revisions to City Code Title Six, Police Regulations, and this is being presented by our city clerk, Mrs. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city councilwoman. I'm going to pull up my slide real quick. Thank you. I'm here presenting the recommended changes from the Code Review Task Force. These changes were reviewed and approved and forwarded for your consideration. There were many areas that we clarified language to make it easier to read, removed redundant language, reorganized sections. Couple of notable things that were changed. We have... Looking for it. I'll find it here in a second. The use of leg traps in residential areas. The task force recommended that that be removed unless it's by a licensed exterminator, a professional exterminator. We thought that that would be prudent to get that allowance out of... The code. I stand for any questions.
Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. All right. So when we get to the dog ordinance...
That was...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the confinement of potentially dangerous and dangerous dogs. What does potentially dangerous mean? And I guess I'm looking if there is a legal definition that is standard of what a potentially dangerous dog is.
Mayor and council, I'm trying to pull it up here. There is a definition that's in our code that is not amended by this, by these code amendments, and I just need to pull it up one second here. Apologize.
Certainly.
Which search function are you using to find it in our code? I'm just curious, because I'd like to use it.
He's in Munich code.
I'm in Munich code. I generally know where it is, so... 621, the definition is "any dog that, A, when unprovoked inflicts bites on a human or domestic animal on public or private property; B, when unprovoked chases or approaches a person upon the streets, sidewalks, or any public property in an apparent attitude of attack; or C, has a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked, causing injury, or otherwise threatening the safety of humans or domestic animals."
Okay. So why is that a potentially dangerous dog and not a dangerous dog? Because that sounds like a dangerous dog. Like, if a dog has attacked someone, that is no longer potential to me. Like, he kind of said, "I am, I am dangerous."
Fair enough. Mayor and council, the, our code for mayor's state statute on this issue, and that the purpose really is to give owners the opportunity to have personal property and their dog...
Right.
...the due process before you get down the road of...
Saying they're dangerous.
Saying they're dangerous and the potential ramifications of that.
Innocent until proven guilty.
Got it.
But once you have a potentially dangerous dog designation, you have responsibility and obligations as a dog owner.
Yeah.
Yes, you do.
So it's like you're innocent until proven guilty.
That does help.
Saves your dogs, too.
Yeah, that does help, because I was like, that seemed specific and yet vague.
Yeah.
So next question would be on 6-2-15 under dangerous dogs. Says guard dogs or attack dogs. So my question is, what, like, do we have it defined what a guard dog is?
Mayor and council, good question. I believe we do, but go back up.
Basically, a dog that's been trained in security protection.
That's correct.
Like, it's a formal thing?
Mm-hmm.
And not just like, "I got a dog because I'm single and..."
"I need a dog to guard me."
Right? So that's what I'm gauging. Is there a specific definition of guard dog?
Mayor and council, yes, there is, again, in the same section, 621 of our code. "A dog trained both to guard property..."
"To guard a property."
"...and to attack persons or animals coming upon premises containing such guard dog."
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
I...
Well, if it's trained to guard the property and trained to it...
Okay.
To guard the person.
And to do that, the dog would have to go through...
Training.
...training, security protection types of...
Does it mean that, though? Or does it mean the owner just...
A dog trained.
...caught him to bark? I mean that, I'm just asking.
To classify as a guard dog under our code, it requires training and then registration.
Like, formal training?
Formal training, yeah.
And are those dogs given some sort of certification or certificate to the owner that they have been, they've completed this security and protection training?
So I believe so.
So I believe so. I don't believe our code has much more beyond contemplating the idea of guard dogs versus just your run-of-the-mill dog who also likes to protect...
Big dogs that bark really loud and scare you.
But let me just double-check that.
Mayor and council, other than what you see in front of you with respect to 6215A and the changes there, that's all we have. We just contemplate the idea that there are trained dogs with that specific purpose, and then if you're going to have a dog that is trained that way, you must register it with the city.
Great, thank you. That helps quite a bit. And now, I'm trying to find the part about the live trap. Where is that? I'm sorry. I'm missing that.
I read that.
It is 6-6-1. All right, let me get to that. Where is it? 6-5.
Use of traps, unlawful exceptions. Is that 6-8 or 6-...
It was 6-8-1 before the removal of certain sections.
There we go. Okay.
There we go, yeah. 6-...
Right. The old, the eight was in, is in red, and the six is in green. Specialty use, specifies the use of traps. Is that what you're looking for?
Okay, so this is just governing the steel, like, the...
Yeah.
Steel traps that...
Yeah.
This is not talking about live trapping. And by live trapping, I mean like how animal rescue groups put a live trap out to catch the kitty. Okay.
Yeah. This is that classic cartoony...
Yep. Jaws of Death.
Yeah, it's like a bear trap or wolf trap.
Okay. That's it. That's all my questions. That's all I wanted to check on.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, I need a motion to adopt the amendments that have been presented before us.
I'm moved to adopt.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, members of the council, because we don't have a full complement of the council, the summary ordinance is going to be continued to the next meeting, and it'll come in our consent agenda item for the summary ordinance. Okay? So may I have a motion to move the summary ordinance to the next council meeting?
Motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you. Members of the council, that's all the business that's before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion?
Uh, yes, second.
And a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay, and a motion carries. We stand adjourned.